... meeting to order of the Independent School District number 832, regular Board of Education meeting on Thursday, August 27, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Usually we start with public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight, Julie?
No.
Thank you. Roll call of attendance?
Well, I know you're used to me doing the roll call, but I am done.
You're done?
I don't think I have to do an actual roll call.
You don't?
I just don't.
But it needs to be done?
Yes.
So I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
By Kevin, second by Stacy. Any discussion on the agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Julie, I feel like we took all your work away from you.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. I'll make sure. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the consent agenda, which is number 13, pages two and three.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Julie, second by Stacy. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Any discussion? I'd like to welcome the new teachers to our district. I actually got the chance to welcome them, is it yesterday? I welcomed the new teachers to the district. I see a number of them are falling on the consent agenda tonight with their contract. So I do want to welcome all the new teachers and staff to the district for this academic year. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. We do not have any presentations or recognitions tonight. Our student representative is not with us tonight. I assume she'll be joining us at the next meeting once the school year begins.
The next regular meeting.
The next regular meeting.
Great.
Great. So on to discussion information items. So we're going to start with the board calendar, which is in the board package. Are there any items on the calendar people would like to call out?
I have something.
Yes, Kevin's over.
It's just on the Wednesday, September 2, for the 916 board meeting, which I'll be attending, there's a special session an hour ahead of time, which is not reflected on the calendar. Just point of clarification.
You'll be attending as a representative from our district?
Yes.
Thank you. And are you still all virtual? Are you a person?
Virtual.
You're virtual?
You're virtual.
Okay. Just curious.
And I'm the U, the clerk.
Oh, okay.
14. Think about that. Yeah.
That's a lot. I will call out the MSBA advocacy tour. Will be a Zoom meeting this year on September 15. And I believe there's one the next day if you can't do that, evening time for all board members that can't make their regional meetings. So the night of 15 is the metro area board member meeting. So it'll be tailored to the metro area. But if you can't make that, there's one the next day. I'll be attending the one on the next day that's open to all across the state. And is it rebroadcast or is it live? It's live. All of them will be live. And do we know if legislators will be attending or is this, we don't know? We don't know that yet. Okay. So. All right. Changing off on calendar. All right. Next item on our agenda is the 2019-2020 preliminary audit update. Here comes Jeff.
Well, and there'll be a...
All right.
Uh-oh.
Nope, I don't need that.
Uh-oh.
Okay. Good evening. Yeah, we are, and these are, which way, Patrick? There we go. Yeah. Far enough along to provide some preliminary audit data. And so we started the audit in June with the preliminary, and that's kind of the process, compliance, those kinds of things. That part of the audit went very well. The feedback I got from auditors is we may have a finding for lack of segregation of duties. That's probably a finding that you've seen every year. I think you'll see just about every school district in the state gets that kind of finding. So now we are into the, into, do we say began on August 1, so we're all into the fieldwork. And that's our financial statement presentation, audit of state aids, taxes, et cetera. So we should have the, should have the audit completed. I think we'll be done with fieldwork next week, and a final report then sometime in September. So I think that what we can report here are some pretty good favorable results. Did I go too far? Yes. So general fund enrollment, we're up about 10 students from what we added to budget. So that's about, say, $70,000. We had two, two kind of entitlements that were greater, the final entitlement's greater than what we had actually booked in the audit the previous year. I think I've talked about that in some of the reports I did in the spring. So special education, categorical aid, underaccrued from FY '19, and that amount alone was about $324,000. So what happens when you underaccrue, that's going to provide additional revenue for, in the current year. I think the basic gen ed aid probably had an underaccrue of about $32,000. And then my two, Barb's heard a lot about these two funds, had a lot of different names for them. My two favorite funds, 25 and 50, are now, kind of, we've set up the account structure to make sure that they're reported the way we're supposed to report that data under UFARs. That's general fund highlights on revenue.
Questions in the hour?
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Come on, careful.
Yep, okay.
So for the two accounts you're talking about, the donation account and the activity funds account?
Yep.
Those were changing to be in compliance with state statute, right? Because they made a change in statute or rule?
Yeah, certainly. So Fund 50 is the student activity, and that's where the change occurred?
Okay.
In state statutes. So we had to set up a different kind of accounting structure, use finance codes. We have to identify, we have a lot of different accounts in there that really aren't student activity. We're going to leave them in Fund 50. They don't get reported as a 301 finance. But so I was setting up all those new account codes.
To come into compliance with a new law.
And then Fund 25 is our donation. And we didn't have revenue and expense codes. We used like a liability code. So we really weren't able to report the way you're supposed to with, under UFARs.
Okay.
So those have all been, all been fixed.
Thank you.
Taken care of. Yeah. General fund expense, we knew that, and I think we reported a little bit of it in the, in the spring with monthly reports. We knew we would be underspending in certain areas. And you can see what's listed there. Probably makes sense when you think about it, school closure, what areas we underspent. So subcosts, utilities, co-curricular and building supply allocations. I think subcosts, we probably underspent by about $140,000. So it's budget to actual. Utilities, I think about, I think I've got it down here. Subs is $135,000, utilities $140,000, and then spring sports, $70,000. So when you have more revenue, less expense, that means you can build some fund balance. So the unassigned was the 1.6, so that's prior year. We'll go at about 3.2 in the current year. That's just, yeah. What percent?
Thank you.
I should have put that on there. Just under, or just over 8%. So it's about 8.01.
Wow.
Yeah.
I can't, what? How did that happen?
Um.
I know.
Right here?
I just explained it. I know. But it's a miracle.
I didn't get into all of the detail, but it's kind of those things. Special ed was, the categorical aid was a big significant factor for us. And we certainly did underspend. And these are just, these are just some of the major categorical areas. But we did see a significant reduction in costs, so.
Back to time, Mike. So if you go back to the previous slide?
Yep.
As we look at all those areas of savings, what are you thinking or predicting for this year if we stay in this hybrid model? Will we have savings in these areas as well going into next year? Or is it too unpredictable? I mean, if we go back to a distance model, we'll have savings again.
Right.
But will we have savings in the hybrid model, too?
I think we'll probably be back to more what we had budgeted in the past.
So it'll be closer to budget if we stay in hybrid?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, to the normal budget. Yeah.
So if anybody's watching, they understand that the school board has a fund balance policy of 8%. And so we have, for the last little bit, been under due to things in our control or mostly out of our control. But, I mean, this is a good thing because it does help us weather the financial storm that may come with the fact that the state is significantly projected to be underwater in the next biennium. And this is really a good thing to help make sure that we're stable and can weather this financial storm. And the idea that we've, the last seven years gotten a 2% increase, and that might not be a reality going forward. So I hate to, you know, do it because of these things, right? I mean, it's not my ideal way of getting to that 8% fund balance. But it is good that we are at that 8%, so.
Yeah, and I'll just comment on the, on the reserve funds. They pretty much, I think operating capital went down a little bit. That's reflected there in the 495 to the, to 470. And then the next slides are going to talk about, we did some additional assigning of revenue. I think it makes sense for, for the year we're going to be in here when school starts. So I'll talk about that. The non-spendable, that's not a big deal, that decrease. That's really a timing issue. So the 182 that was there last year, that's just, that's a prepaid expense. And so by the audit, you can't count that really as an assigned or reserved. So we didn't have that level of prepaid's in the current year. So that goes to, does that make sense? That's really probably more counting than you might want to get into. So the, we did change the student activity funds from assigned. So that part of the Fund 50 I was talking about, that's, that's really student activity. Part of that goes to reserve. So we made that change. And then, and then we wanted to do a couple of additional assignments. The first one is for COVID-related expenses. And we like, we want to assign $250,000 there. We know right now, transportation, we're probably looking at five additional routes. So that could eat that up right there. So that could be $255,000. And then assign some that we have that liability in our Fund 20. So we'd sign $175,000 to help mitigate that unfunded liability. Questions?
So, get some air. So for COVID-related expense assigned fund balance?
Yeah.
That's a choice we're making to be prepared for some expenses coming up, so it can't be taken to other areas. What happens by very slim chance that we don't spend that money, a vaccine comes out, and there's $100,000 standing in this assigned area? Can we unassign it at that point?
Right. Yep.
Okay. So it doesn't assign it forever?
So if we didn't do this, that 250, 175 would actually end up in the unassigned? Could be there this year. So we'd be at eight and a quarter, eight and a half percent fund balance.
So we're going to...
We know the reality, what's, we're going to be up against.
Right.
That we need to do this.
So we're going to stick to our policy with the 8% and try and keep that at the 8% and then move the other pieces over here to make sure we can cover these extra expenses?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then absolutely, when it's assigned, if it's not used, next year it can go to the unassigned.
Eric?
Yep?
So if we get any additional money, like from the Cures Act?
Yeah.
How does that connect with this?
So it doesn't connect to fund balance, because this is all kind of last year. It's revenue that we'll see come in to help us in the current year.
So that would be on profit?
Yeah. I mean, it'll be revenue. So I would say at the end of next year, we'll use those funds, and it won't have an impact on fund balance. But it'll be revenue that's available this year. Okay? Anything else? Not quite as good results with our special revenue funds. So these two funds rely on participation, and so they dropped a little bit. But I think we kind of thought it might be worse than this. And those are pretty good, pretty healthy fund balance amounts for those two, for the level of expenditures for those funds. And I think, yeah, food service, 18% of budgeted expense, and community ed, 21%. So pretty good. Even with that deficit in the current year, a healthy fund balance. I think that's it. Questions?
Any other questions?
Sure.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Kevin?
Yeah. If you go back to the very beginning of your report, and you don't have to turn it back on, but just the piece where we have the findings of the separation, segregation of duties, it comes up, like you said, it's been every year since I've been on the board for 15 years, comes up in every other financial thing for any other group that I've been with, that, that finding comes up. And, I mean, part of it is, it's just the way the rules are, it just has to be reported that way. But you're doing things to, because you know this, you're doing things on your end to make sure that a known deficiency actually is proactively taken care of. Is that...
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would say that. We do as much as we can with the, you know, limited staff to separate duties. So who's, who's recording, who might actually be putting money in the bank? So we try to split those duties. And then I think we do have things in place. Now, one thing we're doing is, is current bank reconciliations, because we would get significantly delayed with those in the past. So that helps, too, that we're balancing cash every month, so.
All right. Any other questions? Julie, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for always giving us such clear information. And I personally have so much faith in the information you're sharing us. And it's very comforting to have that at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you know, I will add that, so we are, we're done with the audit from our perspective. It's still being reviewed. So when I present, I always present these numbers early, so the board's not waiting until October, November to see a board report. We know, hey, we're going to be here in this ballpark. So things could change a little bit. There won't be any drastic number changes, so. But I've done this before, and hey, that number changed by 10,000. What happened? So that could happen as we, as we finalize.
Because this is our preliminary update, and we'll have the full audit.
Yeah, yeah. It's kind of, we're done with, with our calculations, and now the auditors are doing their review, so.
Any other questions? All right. Might as well stay right there.
All right.
The 2021-2022 budget development timeline.
So once we, and I think Kevin was just talking about this, once we finish the audit, we get into the development of next year's budget. And we're just looking at this trend here of 2% funding increase for the gen ed revenue over the last seven years. I think that gives us an average of about $400,000 new dollars each year. So again, we know that the commitments from the state are remaining intact for the current year, but I'm not sure what's going to happen in the next biennium. So we undoubtedly, when we come with budget assumptions, we probably won't have that 2% increase. The state has a, I think it's about a $4 billion deficit. So we're going to have to take all that into account when we develop next year's budget. So with that, we just kind of put together a timeline. I kind of bold the areas where there will be board action. And it'll start with the preliminary levy in September. You'll get the audit report, we're planning on that for October timeline. And then we'll start developing our assumptions, budget impact discussions with cabinet leadership team into December, where you do the final tax levy. And then we'll have you adopt budget assumptions in January, and we'll work our way through the process to get a budget done looking at May of '21. So not going to talk about any assumptions tonight or anything, but that'll come back. Yeah, this is just kind of timeline. I'm just saying there, in addition to kind of putting that together, so to monitor the current year budget, we'll come with reports probably on a monthly basis comparing revenue expenditure budget to actuals, making sure assumptions are, are sound in the current I think that's it.
Kevin, go ahead.
Are you going to do one of those reports that I think maybe was done last year, the year before last, as a fairly thick spiral-bound report, just of all the different things that the business office works on and our financial position and does that, the other thing? A lot of, you know, you've talked about a lot of that even tonight. But, and I can't remember, I think we used it maybe to make our case when, you know, bond, when we were looking at our rating. And that, there was some...
Oh, sure.
That's a CAFR.
What's that?
Your, your...
Yeah. I don't know if that's a CAFR, but if you were doing a bond, if you were having a bond rating review, then the bond, they would, they want to know, how are you monitoring your budget, those kinds of, is that...
Well, yeah, I don't know if it was done just specifically for that, but it seems to me that it was a nice, a very nice report. And I don't know if that was put out by Masmo, if there was some kind of deal that Masmo was doing. I thought we got an award for that, actually, that...
That's for the Certificate of Excellence.
Well, is that, so maybe that, is that...
He's talking about the CAFR.
That, okay, that is the CAFR. So that's the audit report, then?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Very nicely done.
Something that's a big report that's bound?
Yeah. But it's not the one that comes out from the...
No, that's, that is the, I'm trying to think, what would that be? So that's the, that's the audit report.
But we do that, not the firm.
It's been submitted the past couple of years for the Certificate of Excellence.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
It was much prettier, it was much prettier, the one that Kevin is referring to. And it had different data.
Yeah, Alice was working on it, too. I mean, it was a thing of beauty. It really was.
It was very nice.
I just thought that that was a very nice...
Yeah, okay.
Thing. And I don't know if we, I mean, obviously that, there's some cost in doing that time, what have you.
Yeah.
But whether we're going to keep doing that or if that was a...
But if, if that's the CAFR, that's what we're working on right now.
Okay.
So the CAFR is the, it's a comprehensive annual financial report.
And then it, the thing that looked...
Called the...
But is that it was also submitted for the...
And then we, and then it was submitted last year for, for the ASBO Award.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I'm with you. I'm like, what's his, what's his other report?
So Kevin, are you asking, are we going to get that again this year?
Yeah, it's just...
I mean, that's the annual, that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was going to say, we have to do an audit. We don't have to do a CAFR. But our, yeah, we're doing the same thing. So that, we'll do the CAFR, so.
So...
Remember the name next time.
The degree of depth.
Oh, you like that big spiral book?
I do, actually. I like that.
Great reading for you.
Yeah.
I still have the last one.
I know.
See, but it was, the additional information in there was really interesting.
Yeah, so that's...
It really was. So...
Yeah. So with the CAFR, that's at the back of the report, that's where you get all the statistical comparisons. You get like a 10-year...
Yes.
Yep.
We like data.
That was, it was...
Yep.
It wasn't a light item, but it really gave us the granularity to be able to understand everything.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't know what you, yeah, that's what we're working on, right? When we get to have our auditors here, that's what we're doing, so. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for those reports this evening.
Thanks. Thank you.
Is it easiest if I go over the... Okay. So next on the agenda, we have a report on the 2020-2021 enrollment. This was the item we tabled from the study session, and so it's coming back to us with additional information.
Yes. So thank you. And I will get this started, but I'll call Jeff back up here again in a little bit to join me as well.
And do I have a, I might just use him keyboard?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. So we started talking about this at our study session, talking about enrollment. And at the time, we had just received information from families regarding their choices in hybrid, distance learning. And so our numbers were, were very new and somewhat fluid. And so we thought it best to bring it back and, and talk about a little more depth here with a little bit more solid numbers. Though I will say, things continue to be fluid. I want to emphasize that as well. So as an overview, we will talk a little bit about the enrollment process. We'll talk about our hybrid and distance learning numbers based on that enrollment process. And I'll say again, those have fluctuated some. Again, I'll give you a little bit of an open enrollment overview and then an enrollment projection as well. Or that's when I will call Jeff in to talk about that. So just to recap a little bit about our enrollment form. So in order to accurately prepare and assign cohorts and staffing, we did ask families to submit an enrollment form once we had announced our hybrid started, starting learning model. So it was open from August 7 through the 12th. Families filled out a form for each of their children. And we did ask if the child would return to school, if they would like a distance learning plan in place of a hybrid plan, if they'd like their schedule aligned with siblings. We did have some families who wanted their siblings to have different distance learning days, if they needed transportation, and if at the elementaries, they intended to apply for the, for our mon media adventure club childcare or essential worker care, which is, there's some overlap, but we'll, we talk about those differently. And then families, if we hadn't heard from them, we did call the... did call, the building clerical staff did call and to clarify enrollment intentions so we could have the best possible information in moving forward. So I really want to be really clear that August in general tends to be a fluid time for enrollment. That it is not uncommon to have comings and goings during this time, people just moving into the district or people who have left and haven't told us. So that is, that is not a nor, that is not unusual. However, COVID-19 has increased the number of changes and choices for families. There are quite a few more choices and every family has different needs. And so I want you to know that this is one of the things that we've been, well, all districts are, are struggling with a little bit to really figure out how to project what it is we really will have throughout the year, knowing that there are so many, so many different needs and so many different choices. So that survey, though, did help us obtain enrollment numbers at this point in time. And so it gave us a really good picture of where we would be starting. Again, I guess I'm over emphasizing the fluidity. However, it's, it's important here. So, but it did give us a base understanding of, of where we were going to be starting. So, so students choosing hybrid. We have, we've talked a lot about what the two hybrid models are at the elementary and the secondary and how they would look. And you'll see the percentage, these are the percentages we had at the time of our enrollment survey in terms of students who are choosing the hybrid learning model. Again, those have changed a little bit, I would imagine. Distance learning, these are our percentages for distance learning. And we knew, we had heard quite a bit from the spring that families really were looking for more of the, the face-to-face experience at the younger grades, especially at Wildwood. And that's really reflected here, that it was very difficult for our younger learners to be self-directed and to have that distance learning experience. And so that is why we prioritized in our hybrid model, really getting those, our youngest students in as frequently as we could in those four days. So we did ask families that once they chose a distance learning model, that they would be in that, in place for the semester. And the reason we needed to do that is because this has been really complicated for staffing. It's also the case that we'd needed to be really careful about our, our maximum occupancy is at 50% occupancy in each classroom. And so we don't have a ton of flexibility at the elementaries in this model. So in fact, when we were assigning students' days, when their distance learning day would be, we had to really be careful to make sure we had those, though each day was having the same, about the same number of kids would be in distance learning so that we could really maintain that 50% occupancy model. So that's why, one of the reasons we asked for families to stay in a distance learning model for a semester. The other is that we need to align our, our staff and schedules in order to make that happen. And at the secondary level, that was pretty complicated, particularly at the high school where there is as many choices as there are for, for students. So another component to our enrollment, of course, is open enrollment. And we do welcome non-resident students through the, the open enrollment program. This is some detail, I, you, a lot of you know the open enrollment process. So I'm not going to read this to you, but this is our open enrollment. And you can find this information on our webpage. There is, there is this explained to you on, on the webpage about how open enrollment works. Yes.
So if a family leaves, do they, do they know that they have to reapply?
Thanks for asking that. Yes. I do know that Laura had that conversation with a number of families. And it, and I'll even look to Laura, it says it on their applica, on their materials when they are accepted as well. But she also had that conversation. We had that call from a number of families, well, handful of families, there weren't a lot, but of those who are open enrolled, who, who needed to make a different choice for this year. Homeschool is one of those choices that some of our families made. And that was a hard, it was a hard decision for them, I know, because of that. So.
Just one more.
So as you know, we really want to strive, we want to strive to balance those opportunities for students to have, to have a, for our district to have that academic program excellence. And so as part of that, we look to bring in open enrollment so that we can, can have those sizes, for example, at the high school, to have that right size of approximately 1,200 students. We also maintain our class sizes through open enrollment as well. And we, but at the same time, we, we remain a small district. So these are the things we use when we're determining open enrollment. The goal for the elementary schools is to have that, those class sizes below the metro EXU average. And we do this year. The goal for the middle school is to adhere to the middle school model, which we have at this time. And the high school to follow the recommendations of the right-size study of approximately 1,200 students. And we're below 1,200 at this time as well. Oh, hi Kevin. Yes, sorry.
I just wanted to add a little clarity again for anybody that's watching.
Sure.
That this right-sized district has been in place through, we've had at least two state, retired state demographers do work for us to try to find out what is that ideal, what are the trends or what's, and then we've worked on what's the ideal district size based, a lot on the high school with that 1,200 students. If you get smaller than that, then you lose the, the course offerings of which we hold as part of the mon media experience. And if you get much bigger, you lose the anonymity, you know, the students just kind of maybe get lost a little bit. So the 1,200 is the perfect size based on a number of different studies. But I think one of the things too on the open enrollment is many of the districts around us will open enroll anybody they can get. And I think it's important to delineate for us, we use it as a way to get to that ideal, maintain and have that ideal. So we haven't grown over the years. And so that's, our use of open enrollment is a lot different than some of our surrounding districts, like someone to the east, someone to the west, someone, you know. So I think it's important to clarify that, that we're really trying to maintain a size.
Right. And so when we, when we look each, when we look in the spring and we determine how many classes we need at the elementary based on the number of students we have, we don't create another class to bring in open enrolled students. We fill those seats with students who are applying for open enrollment, to Kevin's point. So with that, what I'd want you to know, and we started talking about this last time, because of all the different choices, because of the choices that families are making this year, they are different than what we have typically. It is, it is the case that we have more families than we typically do who have chosen to homeschool. And, and a lot of this is at the elementary level. Similarly, we have more families than we typically do who have chosen to go to private school, in part because they want five days a week for their children. And we are not able to provide that in a hybrid model. And so it is the case that on August 21st, and again, this is fluid, because then by August 22nd, we were up again, but with our enrollment. But the different, we were, the difference between our budget projection and our enrollment is 24 students. And so I just, I wanted to, and I'll bring Jeff up here to talk a little bit about what that means for us financially. But I wanted to let you know that we're going to continue to watch this number and we're going to continue to watch our enrollment. But I also would suggest that we are going to need to be really flexible this year in, in how this looks and how we respond to it. It's different than in other years. But if I could ask, Jeff, do you want to join me for a sec?
Okay.
Question before, before Jeff starts. So this number 24, we've had a number of families, as you said, go into homeschooling options, private school options. And if they're an open enrolled family, they're not guaranteed their spot back. They go back through that process and things like that. But the students who are in our district boundaries, they make a choice that's different than what's been in the past. Will you look at this number of 24? Because those families could change their minds at any point in time during the school year, and we have to bring them back in. The open enrolled, we don't. So when you look at that number of 24, what percent approximately or number of those are resident families?
I don't know the percent offhand, but it's the majority.
Majority.
The majority. But I will say too, within those numbers, some of those families choose private schools, they chose private schools last year too. So it's not all, it's not all new families. They're just.
Right.
But yes, the majority are, are resident.
Resident students who, if they change their mind for whatever reason, mid-year, not even at semester, we are required by law to have them back in our system. And so it's going to be important to save, to have space for them, should things be fluid in their lives as well. All right.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's one of the reasons for not going to the waiting list and bringing in many more students, because I think that's, some of that's going to happen. So, so the budget impact, 24 kids on an ADM, so not the weighted average, but an ADM, just over, just over $6,000. So total about $144,000 when we look at this number. So that's the reason for, so when we come and do a revised budget for this current year, we know we had, you mentioned the CARES money. We assigned COVID-related to $250,000. So all of that's going to have to come into play during this current year. So we, it's just going to be, it's a different year.
So when you say 6,000 per student, but some of them, if they are weighted, then it is more?
Yeah, yeah. Then it gets up to, yeah, yep.
So a minimum would it be?
Elementary. So I just plug in, if I take one student off of our projection model and ADM, our revenue goes down by about $6100. So, yeah.
So that's the.
Yeah. Yeah. That's all the pieces of funding that are attached to, that are attached to enrollment. So. And then we have lots of conversations in here, but, so the other thing with that enrollment, if you go back to the budget book, you probably see a different number for the budget. And that's because what's not included here, that, what I included in, in the budget are tuition students, our pre-K. So, so what we're doing here is, okay, what's, what's my number in the budget book? That's 3282. When we're just talking about seats in our buildings. So that's why we're bringing that down to that. 3240. Did I just say that? Because some of them might go back and say, gee, in that budget book, that budget book, I thought they said 3280, 80, 3282, I think is what we had. So, so again, the CARES revenue and COVID-related assignments will help.
Out of the 24 people that, the families, you said that some of them had, they're not new. They've taken their kids to private school previous years. And so how many of them are there? And how do, and?
Well, this is what I, I would have a really hard time quantifying this without interviewing every family. I, I just, I would want to be really clear about that. And so for me to project who will be back, who's only ten, we certainly have gotten feedbacks for some families who have said, you know, just for this year, I have to make a different choice for my family. And so, but we don't know that about everyone. We don't, so without interviewing them, I, I don't know. And, and so, which is why we want to bring this to you and just say we're, we're down 24 from where we had projected. And things are very unpredictable at this time. And so I, we really, we want to just be upfront with you that this is our situation that we're in. We feel like we've come up with ways that we will mitigate this so that we'll be fine. But it is, it, but we also need to be flexible in the way we look at enrollment for this year. It's a little different process than what we've had to, we've been able to do in the past.
So by keeping this number 24 in, in reduction and not adding additional students assures it, well, not, we can't ever 100% assure, but gives us a better feeling about being able to maintain our high academic quality and not compromise there because we won't be oversubscribed at some point.
I, I think that's true. Now, and again, right, this is the 24 on August 21st.
Right.
Okay. So I don't know what that'll be, that will be in the future. I'd want to be clear about that. It's just that this year, at this time, this is a little different than where we expected to be.
Right. And we're choosing to stay like this because of maintaining academic quality?
We are, we are, yes. At this, at this time, we are choo, we are suggesting that we're going to just monitor where we are. And we are going to talk about it, we're going to continue to talk about it as a, I just watch these numbers and, and be, be a little more flexible with it than we have in the past, maybe. Mm-hmm. We have accepted a few more. For example, there have been a few more open enrollments that we've accepted, but we haven't, not 24. So.
Is PSEO still an open option for kids? Or is there a deadline on that to the, to all the institutions they want to go to? Or is it still fluid?
I don't, I don't actually know if it's still open. I'm seeing a no. I know they changed the date. They, they pushed it back, but I don't know that it's still open. I don't know.
I was wondering if families are still trying to choose that, because I always was under the understanding that there was like a May deadline.
There had been. And, but I know that it got, I, Lucy, do you know by chance?
Yeah. In statute, a district can choose to enforce a deadline as early as May. We have not ever put that deadline in place, but in statute, it says we can. We have chosen, we haven't done that to this point. What tends to happen at this point, you're working at an institution who no longer does PSEO, but when we used to do it, the institutions often tell students, no, we're done. We need to lock down our enrollment. So some of our PSEO schools that, that students attend have started. And they won't add at this point. So there is that other, the other side sort of ends it as well. But then, I mean, it could come up, you know, for spring semester, students could still do PSEO.
That's true. I think that was it. So this is where you can find more information about enrollments. That's, yes, you may turn it off. Thank you. So that's it. Thank you. Did you have any other questions?
I think it looks great. Thank you for all that information. That helps us understand how fluid things need to be this year.
Fluid, thank you. That's our word.
That is our word. So the next item on the agenda is to talk about continued back-to-school planning.
Here I go.
You're coming back. Well, you can talk from there if you want to.
No, I have another PowerPoint.
Oh, you do? Okay.
More people who.
I was wondering, like, who's going to give this report?
I don't know.
I'm back up here again. So you, I'm going to use this as my superintendent's report as well. I think it all just kind of flows together, if that's okay. So, and I'm going to call some others up here. So we, since last we were together, we've been continuing to work on our back-to-school planning. And so I wanted to just give you some updates based on our conversations in the past. So recently, just yesterday, it went out, didn't it? Just yesterday, it went out, there are classes and cohorts. And so when we did this, again, so for our elementary, they were assigned a distance learning day, Monday through Friday. And our secondaries were assigned either a blue or a gold day, which is the Monday, either they're in person Monday and Tuesday, or sorry, Monday and Wednesday, or Tuesday and Thursday. Everyone has Friday as a distance learning day. So when we did this, we took the entire district spreadsheet and we assigned students by household. Requests came in, included assigning children together, but, and also some assigning on separate days. After we had done that, we, so we did all the requests. We also balanced classes to ensure 50% occupancy in every classroom. We balanced our distance learning days for essential workers. If our essential workers were able to tell us what day they might be home, we tried to make sure that we prioritize those days for our essential workers so that they wouldn't have to come in for a distance learning day. Because we are, we are, so we are required to offer childcare on distance learning days for all our tier one workers. And so if they were able to tell us when they would be home and wouldn't need care, we tried to prioritize that. We honored requests from staff also as tier one essential workers to align student schedule so we could meet those care needs. And we also attempted, then we also attempted to assign families to request a days to reduce childcare needs for them as well. So we did go through, and we did try to assign people as best we So we did go through and we did try to assign people as best we could so we could meet everybody's needs to be able to cover those childcare needs based on input. I'm going to ask, so Kate Anderson, who is our Director of Community Education, is going to come up here and talk a little bit. I know you had some questions at one point about our child, our essential care. I know there were a number of people who were concerned when we made some changes to the way we scheduled elementary and, and then just in general, the angst that comes with the hybrid and, and making sure that working families can, can cover that essential care. And so Kate's going to speak a little bit to the work that has been done since we were together last.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you in person. We have been working really hard at trying to figure out our protocols for our tier-one care and our MAC. So we had about 194 confirmed essential care workers and we're required to provide that care for them from bell to bell, is what we're calling it, on their distance learning day. So that time is 7:45 to 1:15 PM. We have approximately 30 students at both schools that will be a part of the distant learning support time. And then we also needed to provide distant learning support for them from 1:15 to 3:00. And we approximately have around 100 students at both elementaries using that. Please note that we just sent out this survey to all these essential workers today. So by 4 o'clock, you know, we had only had about 46 families that had responded. So those numbers could fluctuate some, but that's what we have at this time. We will also be providing, based on the feedback, feedback that we heard from families and some concerns, we looked at providing some more flexibility and some more cost-efficient childcare options for our MAC families. So we now have two sessions available to families that need care. And that would be the 1:15 to 3:00. And then families could also sign up for a second session, the 3:00 to 5:30, depending on what they needed. We have had the ability in the last several days, getting responses from families and making sure that they're confirmed tier-one workers, to pull off families that were on our waiting list. So that has been very helpful. Right now, we currently have around 11 families that are still on the list. And Jamie, who oversees the MAC program, has informed me that that is the least amount of families we've ever had on a waiting list in previous years. So we're feeling really good about that. Do you have any questions?
So if we're offering this care from 7:45 to 1:15, do we have a physical space? And with the social distancing and the existing classrooms, do we have a physical space to accommodate that?
At this time, yes. We are envisioning about 10 students, 10 to 15 students, it varies per day, based on the ability to plan the distance learning days on the requests that families had, the essential workers' days off, our staff. We think we're only going to need to utilize one classroom.
That's great.
It's going to be great, too, to be able to keep the students in those cohorts.
Thank you.
Stacy?
At the, when they're there from 7:45 to 1:15, will they be getting distance learning, I guess? Because that is, if it's elementary, then it's there one day.
Correct. It's, correct.
So will they be remoting into their classrooms?
They'll be doing some remote times into those key essential times of the teachers and then they'll have the time with staff to be working on activities or projects or things that they need to do.
That's great. And then one other question, then the after-school time, how many students do you have at the, at both schools? What's the full program number?
Typically, in, in MAC or, okay, so in MAC, we typically have about 75 at Wildwood and I'd say around 50 at OHA. So what's going to happen is we'll, we will have rooms that will be essential care workers from 1:15 to 3:00 in some designated rooms. And then we'll have MAC students in different designated rooms because those MAC students, some of them will be staying later in the day. So we're, we're looking at the possibility of using approximately 10 classrooms after the 1:15 time.
And are you sure and staff or are you staffed up?
I think Jamie's feeling really good right now. We've had some peer professionals that we've been able to use. We have some of our high school students being able to come at 2:45, 3:00. And then we have done a few, a few people that we've needed to hire. I think she's maybe short two staff right now. It actually is really good for school-age care. Any other questions? Okay, I'll turn it back to Barb. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is, we haven't talked about this before, but I did want to highlight that we are working on open houses and tours for students, particularly those new students, making sure that we have an opportunity for them to come in and, and see, see the school and, and get some tours. So you see a number of in-person tours for our new students. And you see at Wildwood, a drive-by and say hi event, which is similar to their drive-by and say goodbye. I don't know if that's what it was called at the time. At any rate, we are working on, on doing some things differently, but we're still, we're still working on, on giving students opportunities to meet their teachers and, and get in when we can.
I want to say, so I have a sixth grader and they did a video tour that was led by a seventh grader. And if you haven't watched it, she is the cutest thing. I, she did such a great job. My sixth grader was excited watching her. He paid attention. She did a great job. So I thought that was great. And then also, obviously, sixth and seventh grade got to go up. And I guess eighth grade as well. So they at least got familiar with the building and what it'll be like to go in a certain direction and all of those things.
Terrific. Good. Thanks for that. Okay. So device distribution, and I'm going to ask Patrick Cruthers to come up and talk a little bit about that. I know that this is a, this is a big undertaking. And I want to thank Patrick for all his work he's been doing this summer to organize this so that we can truly have a device for every student. And the fact that we had to get these devices when, you know, we're in competition with other districts to make sure we can have devices here. And then just all the logistics of being able to get these out. So Patrick is going to talk a little bit about where we are with that.
Yeah, so the picture you see is Tanya, Jim, two of our tech specialists in the district who have been just incredible these last few months with the logistics to, to make all this happen. The, the time and the energy they've put into this initiative has been, is really admirable and really greatly appreciated. What you don't see up there in that picture, there's five or six pairs who've been helping us this summer as well to prep for this, as well as some custodians who have done some cleaning of devices. We went through a process last year with distance learning of putting out about 1,000 devices to students and staff, collecting those devices, prepping those, and then ordering new devices that we'll be distributing, kind of a combination of those, of the two in the next, next couple of weeks. So it's been a lot of work. It's been exciting work. It's really going to have a great impact. And I think that's one of the things that really drives all of us as we, as we work through this. So we are ready. Next week, we're going to be distributing the devices. We'll start that process. Kindergartners, first graders and second graders will have iPads available to them. They will keep the iPads in the classroom and just take them home on the days when they, they need them. For some students, that might be every day. For some students, that might just be, you know, once a week that they, that they need to. Students in grades three through passages are going to be taking Chromebooks home. At OHA Anderson, the students, again, will keep them in the classroom and just take them home as they're, as needed. But our sixth through passages students will be taking devices back and forth throughout this experience, regardless of what we're, what model we're, we're working in. So next week, on Monday, by Monday, we'll have an email out to families that will tell them when the pickup times are and explaining how that's going to work. But a little preview for you, the way Wildwood is going to do it is their distance learners as part of that drive-by. Next Thursday, they'll drive through and they'll, they'll pick up their devices, all the students who are distance learning. Again, for the rest of the students, their devices will be in the classroom when they, when they start on the first day of school. At OHA Anderson, they're also going to pick up in the, I believe it's in the bus, the bus lane is where, the bus lot is where the students are going to pick up, again, just the distance learners. Hybrid learners will have the, the devices in the, in the classroom. At the middle school, the devices for the hybrid learners are going to be in school on the first day. So when they go into their first hour class on the first day, whether that's the Tuesday or the Wednesday of that first week, their device will be in the room for them. The distance learners, however, will be able to come in September 2nd and pick up their, pick up their devices. Any of the, and then the students at the high school, they'll have two opportunities for any of the learners, the distance learners or the hybrid learners, will be able to come in next Wednesday or next Friday to pick up their devices. Any of the students who are doing hybrid who don't pick up a device, we'll just, we'll, we'll work to get those in their first hour classroom, again, on their first day so that those devices are, are available. The other thing I want to point out is this is so much more than just the devices. The device is just a tool and it's really about what the, you know, the families are, are comfortable doing with them and then what our staff is prepared to do with them. So we are working on some documentation for our families that sets out some guidelines for the families so that they understand how the devices should be used, what our expectations are, and how, as parents, they can have expectations as well. One thing we hear is, you know, my child goes into their bedroom, I don't like that. And sometimes parents need to hear that it's okay, you can set that rule of where that device should be in your household. So we do have some documentation that's going to go out to families about that. Now, we've been doing a lot of work this summer to prepare for staff and get staff to the point where they're comfortable with the tools to really utilize these devices to move this learning experience along for students. We had a few different groups who are working on minimum competencies for students, or for staff and for students about with different applications, what are the things that they need to do to really make this the tool or to use all of the, the different parts of the tool. So we'll be introducing those to staff next week and that's going to help. It's going to help staff who made leaps. Maybe they didn't know Google Classroom and then they made a leap and they could use it, but there's some stuff in the middle that they, they missed. This is going to help fill in the gaps for that. So that's the work that we've been doing. Any questions? Kevin?
I know you looked at this in the spring and are we comfortable that every student, every family is going to have that internet connection, a hotspot?
Last year, we had 50 hotspots that we were able to hand out to families who, who needed it. This year, we have those 50. We're looking at ordering a few additional because we do have some staff who use them as well throughout the school year. So because we're in hybrid, we will have some situations where staff need, need those. And we'll have some families who need them as well. What's a little bit different at the start of this year is that we're not in a stay-at-home order. So we can open up some opportunities. When you walk in or when you walk out, you're going to notice some kiosk or some tables that are set up, some study carrels in the hallway here, that community advocate are working on creating an opportunity for students to check those out if they need a place to work. We've also had some other community groups who have contacted us about opening up some space. And we're looking at how we can open up our, some of our spaces, maybe at some additional times for students who maybe don't have the best internet connection to come in and, and be able to connect their device.
So if, do students have to use the Chromebook if they're more comfortable on the device that they have at home? If they have a device? Or, or is this going to be, you need to be consistent and use the Chromebook? It's just, that's a detail that you probably don't want.
We're assigning a Chromebook to everyone or an iPad to everyone. And one of the things we heard from teachers last year that was a barrier for them was students had different devices. So when they would set an expectation of what they wanted to do, it worked for some students, but not for all students. So we know that now that our teachers can set the expectations based on what they can do on the Chromebook. If a child's at home and there is something that they want to use and they can do that work, that's, that's their choice. But when they're in school and then there are going to be some things that maybe they need to utilize the, the device, the Chromebook or the iPad. But we are assigning one to every student.
I have another question.
Yeah.
How, how bad were the losses in the spring? Or did you get most, most back?
Most of them are back. All of the Chromebooks have come back. We have one hotspot that we're working to get back. And we had a handful of devices that were maybe a cracked screen or it wasn't worth replacing them, but just a handful. We had some other smaller things that we put some money into to, to repair some devices. But families did a really nice job. One thing we heard from families, they really appreciated having this, that opportunity. It, it helped families quite a bit. So families did a really nice job of taking care of the, of the devices and we expect that's going to happen this year as well.
So as we look forward in time, we're going to continue this, I assume, in terms of a learning tool for students, COVID, no COVID. But will they be assigned an iPad and can they go and they'll keep that for three years? Or are we going to collect all the devices every summer for cleaning, maintenance? And, I mean, because that could fundamentally change your, your work patterns for the year.
Right. I don't know right now. So we're, normally if we're going to do, when we were, when we started talking about this one, a device for every learner, a one-to-one initiative, as some districts call it, usually it would take a year, year and a half to, to process through. We have an option and we'll see what happens at the end of this year and where we're at with our current situation. We may choose to have students keep the devices over the summer for next school year, if the situation warrants that. But right now, we're planning on that we're going to collect the devices, just for this first year at least, to find out really where we're at, what we have to do for repairs. And then we'll, we'll learn from that and decide how we want to proceed in the future.
So when you think about all these students having devices, how does that change the work of the tech department in terms of support?
We would learn on the fly. So, so last year, again, Jim, Tanya, Adam, who does our tech integration, his, his job changed significantly as well as he had to learn how to train teachers remotely, work with families. We had to learn how to support families remotely as well. So creating opportunities for them to submit a work ticket, a trouble ticket, if they're having issues and what things we could support them on and what things we, we couldn't. So that was a big learning curve. I have a, another person, Megan, who started actually the very first day of distance learning. So she's a desktop support specialist who had no desktops to, to support. So her, her job evolved and that's been our, that's what we do, though. We evolve and we change because the technology changes so much and what we need to do. So in the 18 years I've been here and where we started, that all of the positions have evolved so much. And that's, that's just what we'll do right, right now. And we'll figure out what that, what that does look like.
So we're building a one-to-one device plan for a district that usually takes a year or more as we go. Are there?
We've done it in a very thoughtful way.
Yes.
Very confident.
I, I agree with that, but.
Very successful. We're, we're set up for success.
Yes, we are. But are there things that the board needs to think about in terms of adopting of policies or resource allocations that would support your work?
Yeah, the support's going to be a big piece for, piece of it. The devices, as I said, are just a, a small part of what this initiative is about. There's security to think about. There's the support and we'll see how that, that evolves and what our, what our needs are. But absolutely, the department's going to have to, is going to have to change. We've added since, since last spring and just moving to this distance learning plan, we've added about 2,000 devices. And again, I want to go back. You saw Jim, Tanya, I've mentioned Adam and Megan. That's our support team, you know, district-wide with the, you know, with the hardware. There's a lot of other people that do other things. That's not just those devices. That's the, the wireless network. That's the, a lot of the jewelry systems run on the network. So all of that has moved into it. So, yeah, we're going to have to rethink how we utilize our people, see where there's some, maybe opportunities to create some new positions that are going to help our students and help our, our staff and our teachers especially.
You've done very impressive work on a very short timeline and I didn't mean to imply otherwise.
No, yes.
But I thank you for the clarification because I think it has gone very, very well. And it's a huge challenge and I want to recognize the challenge that you've had in front of you and the way you've approached it. And so I really appreciate that work. Go ahead, Kevin.
I too want to echo the, my hats off to the tech team because you really are doing this, you know, just because we have to. And it's, it's great. And so I think I echo Lucy's sentiment that we need to know where we're at as far as resources, as you know more. Just a thought that I'd seen or read about is. Uh, just a thought that I'd seen or read about is in some of the districts, uh, they've actually used students, seniors, uh, high school students to provide some tech support for low-level things where students can help students. Is that something you're looking at or thought about?
Yeah, we've talked about, um, how we can grow into that a little bit. One of the things that will really help us with that is with the media specialist position being at the middle school and high school. Uh, it would be those high school students and maybe some of the middle school students that we utilize. Uh, so that's a really great, great way for us to make some connections and, uh, help some students who that's their, that's their passion and, you know, put their skills to, to use. So it's definitely something that, um, that we'll look at growing, growing into. And to, to your point, I, I realize that you know that and, um, that was more for everyone else that.
Yes. Yes. Thank you for that though. I, I truly think it is impressive, the work that you've done because it is a very time-intensive, thoughtful process that needs to happen and it's happened, you know, appears to us very seamlessly as parents and, and community members, it, because of the work you're doing behind the scenes that people don't see. So I just wanted to really thank you and your team for that.
Thank you.
Mike?
Has anybody ever, I don't know, does, does the city of Montomeda have a Wi-Fi, a free Wi-Fi for its residents? I don't think it does.
No.
Has anybody thought about approaching the city to have a citywide free Wi-Fi program? Other cities do that. That would help a lot, I think, with these hotspot issues too. Um, I don't, has anybody thought about it, talking to them or?
Yeah, there's work that's being done at the, at local levels in some communities and then up to the state level, um, as well. I haven't been a part of conversations in, in Montomeda about any plans for that. Uh, and one thing we, we run into is some of the, the more rural parts of our, our district where we don't have fiber that runs out to those areas and maybe they can't get, um, high-speed internet. Uh, we're also limited with the number of internet service providers we have in this area. There's really only two and it's not a lot for families to, to choose from. And hotspots aren't an answer for everyone.
Right.
Some of us don't have really good cell coverage, cell coverage in our homes or in our area and in those cases a hotspot doesn't, doesn't help. So that really is a, a, a much bigger issue than, um, you know, that this is, I think distance learning is brought to light.
And remember our district covers more than one city and so as we think about Hugo and these other.
I understand. San Antonio a couple of weeks ago and they have free Wi-Fi every place and so that's, like, I just thought of that, maybe they'd be helpful anyway if we had something like that too.
Well, your efforts, Patrick, don't go unnoticed. It's nothing short of heroic, really. It seems like a miracle.
Thank you.
And, and now I'm just stepping up so I can call someone else up to the podium. Um, we're going to talk about transportation and nutrition services and Jeff Priest will talk for us about that.
All right, thank you. So, uh, yeah, we mentioned in there that, that postcards will be avail, available next week. Um, we actually have, they'll be ready tomorrow, uh, so we probably will get them out, uh, get them sent out, uh, tomorrow. We, we talked about the, um, the walk zone for the high school, middle school. We have, uh, noticed all those families that are involved that, that will not have transportation this year and they'll, they're part of that walk zone. Um, and then another budget impact thing, but we thought it probably made sense while we're in the, uh, distance learning or the hybrid model to eliminate parking fees for high school students or at least the start of this year, so. On transportation, and I think I mentioned it earlier, right now, um, right now we're up about five routes in the initial planning. I, I think there will be opportunity to tweak those routes. We'll look at load counts, um, immediately and see where we can perhaps make some efficiencies, uh, with the number of routes. But, um, you know, at about $55,000 a route, uh, it starts to add up when you add five routes. Yeah.
When, so it says a walk bike, uh, zone for secondary school from St. Andrews. Is that, who are the students that'll be participating in that?
So that's the area that, if I can remember where that's at, um, north of Stillwater Road and then, um, east of Warner, up to Hick, south of Hickory and then I think it's East Avenue, so west of East Avenue. So it's kind of that.
They'll walk from their house.
Yeah, and then the, into the entrance of, yep. Yeah, yeah. And I think that, um, I was, so what's the, how far could you be walking? So I think I went to that probably Hickory and, and Warner, kind of that corner down Hickory to, I mean, because I think that's probably the farthest and, and maybe a half a mile to the entrance, so.
So do you have a number of families who opted to not use busing to try to be helpful? Or did you notice an increase of?
Um, so, so that's where I'm saying that, um, we're late getting that, so transportation needed to route and we were just getting through that information this week. So I, so that's where I think our routes are. I think when, when we can actually look at all that data, do some tweaking to the numbers, we can probably get that back. We can reduce that.
I'm wondering then, would that mean longer lines of parents driving students at the elementary and, and middle school? And if so, are there, would there be an option of a different drop-off point that you could have a different group of kids walking?
Yeah, it, boy, when we've looked at, at walk zones in this, it's kind of hard to, we, we looked at that, I think, just to the, Barb, was that to the north of the current walk zone? So there is another.
Yeah, so we, yeah, that neighborhood that's just north of Hickory.
So remember though Stacy, we have one fifth of our students not attending at the elementaries, which helps bring those numbers down too. So if we have families who've been super supportive to be able to have the ability to drop students off, I don't think we'd have enough to, to increase the, the drop-off piece. I think it's a really good question, but I think that one-fifth helps us.
Yeah, and, and I should, I haven't mentioned, but the other thing about transportation, we're running at 50% capacity. Um, so that means, I think it's, I would say 36, uh, elementary, but it means 26 secondary. So that's where you can get into adding, adding a few buses, so. But again, we'll be looking at that, doing load counts and seeing where we can tweak, where we can tweak routes, yeah.
Um, is there enough buses to be had or, and more importantly, are there enough bus drivers to be had to do this?
I think I've been asked that by a couple of board members and I asked the, I talked to the bus company, um, not daily, but I was down there Monday. They, um, they no longer have the Stillwater contract, so that's where they were able to get some capacity with buses and additional drivers. So they feel right now that they're, that they're good, they had everybody back. So I was down there to meet all the drivers Monday morning and, so, yeah, that's, that's not the case everywhere, so. So we got to feel pretty fortunate about that.
Just one other question, this kind of ties back to budget, but will there be a decrease at all for not having a secondary bus on Fridays?
Um, we're, so we have a, we have a, we have a two-tier system. Um, so we're going to pay for, we're going to pay for the number of buses that we put in, maximum number that we put in any tier. So not necessarily, yeah. But again, um, I'm certain we can tweak these routes and reduce the, it's five right now, I think we can, we'll be able to reduce that.
So my, my question is about, um, I'm not sure how much enrollment is up at St. Jude's, but how does that impact our bus? Our bus routes?
They, they let us know this week because of our, our, um, changing our times, they're not going to use our service this year.
Oh, okay.
And I think, you know, they've just had a handful of students, so.
Okay.
Anything else on transportation? Uh, child nutrition, we want to run a, kind of a hot lunch program. We did, you know, we started in March with the summer food service program. So the hot lunch program will give students some options, some choices. Uh, we thought it was important to do that for this year. Um, we also, and kind of built this into the budget for 21, for, what year am I in? 2021. So, um, we did not increase the cost of a meal, so we kept lunches at the same price as, as the previous year. And, uh, and then families are getting their pins and, and, uh, order forms, uh, well, they'll get that information on September 1st, so. So, questions on food service?
So, based on the numbers that you have, indicator will be doing the distance learning. Um, it says that, um, just as long, they may take pre, home prepackaged meals on Fridays at Montomeda High School. Um, is there any accommodation for families that don't have access to a vehicle to drive up there?
Um, it's probably something we need to think about, so, yeah. So as of, as of, no, no.
Again, I know we did something in the spring on that there.
So we did, you know, and I, and I think, um, the issue with that might be that this is the, the regular childcare program now this year. So we were able to switch to, in March, we were able to switch to what's called the summer food service program. So then you can have some little satellite, you know, like we did. I think we had two sites where we provided meals, so, um, I'll look into that. We'll see if we can do that. I think there might be some issues with, when you're running the, the hot lunch program, just for delivery and who can be there to distribute. But it's something we probably should take a look at.
Yeah, I just, I feel pretty, I just want to make sure that no one slips through the cracks.
Yeah.
I know you don't either, but there may be some community resources out there as well that could help on that front.
Sure, yeah, yep. And I don't thi, and the other part that, um, I didn't mention was that, so when you're in your distance learning, so we are going to provide, we're required through the hot lunch program to, um, provide those meals for those kids. But right now we're doing it at the location, so we'll look, we'll look at that. Anything else?
All right. There we go. So once again, I returned to call someone else up. So, um, so Alice Swayford's going to join us, she's our communication specialist and, um, I would be remiss not to, I don't know, I don't even know what to say about all the work that, that Alice has done for us this summer in terms of keeping everyone informed and making us, all of us on the administrative team do better with our communications and as we're working through things, asking the right kinds of questions and making us, making us, um, work through the way that we talk about things to make it clearer and clearer for families. And so Alice is going to talk a little bit about what's, what's new, um, from last time we talked, but as, I know that you all recognize this on the board, but I'm going to say it anyway, that we would, we would be lost without her. I told her she could never leave me. I've also, um, I've also gotten reviews from my mother, you will be happy to know, that has, um, has ranked her very high in communication specialist, that's from her perspective as well, in case that counts for anything. So, anyway, so, Alice.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. Um, the work that I do, I think, just is, is a piece of the great leadership team that we have here and I'm honored to be one piece of it. So, um, just an update on communication. So as you probably know, um, we have this school year webpage that we created on our district webpage. And so I think of that as a hub for information about our school year plan. So that's where you'll find, um, the frequently asked questions document. It's a Google doc that's updated, um, almost daily. We use parent questions or other questions. And then, um, really for us using, um, you'll see we've been using Google docs and Google slides so that we can give families real-time information, but also make sure that, um, everyone has access to the same information. So it's all in the same places, you can always access it and it's real-time. Um, we also have the COVID-19 protocols. Um, school supplies have been a big question this year and that's where all of that's located. Um, and then just an update for the board, um, the student and family handbook has been updated with COVID-19 changes and the verification forms for the handbook, um, as well as policy 524 and distance learning agreements will be emailed to families tomorrow morning. Um, so families will get that and do the verification forms. And just for, um, for your information, just ongoing, um, our communication tools, um, to update, just continue to be using video, um, using the Google Suite tools like, um, slides and docs, as well as the school messenger emails, texts, we're using SMS texting that we started last year, as well as voicemails. Um, we know that we heard, and we heard this last year during distance learning, the amount of emails can be overwhelming and it can be overwhelming especially this time of year during back-to-school time. Um, so what we've done is we've worked with all of our school buildings to create, uh, like a back-to-school updates Google doc. Um, so that's where, um, we're having them put all of their back-to-school information that goes out via email, it's also in those docs. So, and that's located in all of their school webpages, um, under quick links. So it's also right by where we have the school year plan, um, website. Um, we just wanted, la, last time, um, Barb gave an update, she talked to you about, um, the activities protocol. That's when we were about to have, um, our students return to campus and so we had, um, just about to give our, our COVID protocols for our, um, athletes. Um, we just wanted to share with you that, um, last week we shared with staff our COVID protocols and then we emailed that out to families on August 22nd. That document's on our school year planning website. That is built in Google slides, so it's timely and people can access that. They can screenshot these, um, daily health checks, um, that's that screening tool and then in that document is all of the quarantine information for families. Thank you.
And so with that, um, do you have any other questions regarding our?
Kevin, go ahead.
Um, staffing is all coming together, I'm assuming that that part's working out all right?
It is working out all right, yes. We have been, um, very fortunate. Our, our, uh, our staff has, has worked really hard to, our, ultimately our, our teachers really want to see those kids and so that, we have been working through different ways that we can make sure we can accommodate our staff. Um, we've been really fortunate for their partnership and, and working through everything and I think so far we're, we're looking good. We're, we're almost there. We did have a few retirements as, as we talked about and so we're, we're still filling, um, a position or two, but we are very close, so. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So that's everything, your superintendent's report, everything, that's the whole thing.
That's a lot of details.
Yeah. So next we have action items. We have one action item tonight, which is the approval of donations and grants totaling $890.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Kevin, seconded by Stacy. In the discussion, I would like to thank the donors and foundations who have given money to our district. We will use it to the intents that they have asked us to and we appreciate the, the support. Um, all those in favor of accepting these dan, grants and donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next we have board, uh, committee reports. So AMSD, Mike?
Uh, Barb, uh, once more, I'm going to ask you to speak because I couldn't make the meeting on Friday, two Fridays ago, and I think you did go.
And so we heard from Commissioner Ricker and Deputy Mueller and it was updates that I've actually already shared with you, so, um, there wasn't, there wasn't much new at that time. We also heard from the Secretary of State, Steve Simon, um, and he talked to us, I, I imagine Kevin heard a very similar talk from him when you were at, at, he's talked at the, what is it, the paper?
Yeah.
Yep. And, um, just a lot of conversation about encouraging that, uh, voting early to ease the stress on the in-person, um, voting but that they have lots of good practices in place, so don't be frightened of it either. So it was a lot about voting with their, I don't, you could probably.
Well, that, I mean, that's pretty similar. I think, you know, we've probably all been bombarded by the, the primally of the national news on this front and I, but what Steve Simon said is in Minnesota, we're well-positioned to, um, be able to handle this in a, in a safe and efficient manner to make. and efficient manner to make sure everybody's vote is counted. The, uh, one of the big takeaways is just the, uh, they use thirty thousand, there are three thousand polling places in the state of Minnesota. And they, uh, there's thirty thousand polling, uh, individuals, people that come in, uh, to, to do that work. And we have our normal group that comes and does, uh, our work here at Montomedi. And the average age of those polling people is over sixty, so that puts them in the vulnerable category, according to the COVID and the CDC. And so his, Steve Simon's kind of idea is the more we can push people to the, to mail-in balloting, that will relieve the amount of pressure to have people come to in-person, uh, voting. And then there's this issue of just can we get enough polling judges to come and work to do that? So, um, that's the challenge, to try to alleviate some of the pressure on the three thousand polling places. But his, uh, he instilled a lot of confidence, I think, that's my takeaway.
Along that line, say if somebody wanted to be a polling judge or something, would they reach out to Steve Simon's office?
Yes, um, uh, let's see, Minnesotavotes.org, I believe, is the spot you go. And, um, he, as he pointed out, he says, it is a paid gig. You do get paid to do the work. And there's a, a training, a mandatory training of two or three hours, that gets paid. Then the work you do here from seven to eight, that's paid. Um, so, yeah, if someone wants to do a part-time deal. And there is some, there's provisions for students, uh, between sixteen and eighteen. There's some work that they can do, but there are cer, certain, uh, items they cannot do because of their age. But there are some things they certainly can do, should they feel so inclined to.
We do have a few students who are, who will be doing that, because I signed some paperwork, so I do know we have some students.
Nice.
All right, thank you.
Next is MAF, Julie.
Um, I do not have a MAF report for this month.
Next, we have the Minnesota School Board Association. I mentioned earlier in the calendar that we have the advocacy tour coming up. Um, I know the big issue that will come through that advocacy meeting is advocating for additional funds for the COVID-19 costs at the federal and state level is something we could be advocating for at this point. Um, we also had the summer seminar, I know Julie, Kevin and I attended. Um, and I didn't attend all the sessions, so I don't know if others want to speak to those sessions at all, or?
Do you want to do that, though?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, let's see, so I went to, uh, School Board Communications, that was Greg Abbott and another outside, uh, from a PR firm. And, you know, just talking about, I mean, this is, these are good practices all the time. But essentially, the, uh, idea that we, these are uncertain times and challenging times. And that communications, Alice. Thank you. Um, are really important and good ones. So, um, you know, this idea of conveying calm, confident leadership, uh, where we talk about safety, health and learning are number one. And, uh, you know, just we can't probably tell that message enough. We just need to keep, uh, do that. The other good rule to live by all the time, but also true now, don't let your communications get ahead of your decision-making. Or as Governor will also say, don't get out in front of your skis. Uh, let's see, um, what else did they say? You're, you know, for school boards, part of a team, make sure we speak with one voice. And again, that's something that we always want to make sure we do.
Be human and be humble.
Yep. Facts are necessary but not sufficient. Show compassion and empathy, own your own mistakes, acknowledge your limitations, listen. Customer service always matters. And then, again, I talked about in, in these unprecedented times, everybody's stressed. And even your fellow board members. Uh, so listen, be open and be forgiving. I, again, probably things we should always do. And then, let's see, what else did they say on that? Um, there was just the, I think, the recognition as board members that we need to be very empathetic and very understanding of staff. Uh, we've seen tonight, I think, just the tip of the iceberg about what our staff, everybody in this room has been doing. And, uh, I think what we saw tonight was just a little tip of that big iceberg. So for board members, I think it's super important, and it's always important, but super important now in those times of stress and uncharted waters to be really supportive and thankful of all the work that staff, administration, whole Zephyr team does. So that was the communications one.
And then, um, I did the Race 101 as well, did you do the race?
No, we split on that one.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and it was, it was surprisingly good. I, sometimes it's not always great, but it really was good this time. And, and it was, uh, I, I feel like I've been to so many race and equity Zoom meetings since March. This one was just a really great presentation, starting from, uh, the sixteen hundreds. So I'm not going to give you a whole rundown, but it was, but it was worthwhile. It was, it was a good worthwhile little presentation that they gave, so. Um, that's.
So there was the, um, the one I thought was the very best was the final session where it was the Equity Coordinator Legal Person from the National School Boards Association. Did either one of you see that?
Yes.
Very good.
I thought that was absolutely amazingly strong. And, you know, we have seen, and for good reason, we've all seen a lot of more, uh, training and learning and listening on, on equity and inclusion. But this one really stood out, and this person was, um, from St. George, St. George's Fairfax, is that? Virginia? I don't know, I'm sorry, my, my geography is off, but she's from Ali Easton, she works for NSBA. And she gave this presentation, she had really done her homework about Minnesota. Uh, it just blew me away that she, uh, was that granular with what's going on in Minnesota, demographic changes, uh, the number of, uh, families of color in Minnesota, and then the number of students, which now is thirty-seven percent of the Minnesota school population of eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand public school students. Thirty-seven percent are students of color. And for you, Lucy, maybe you could find out if that is something, because I think I have the PowerPoint. And, um, I'm sure they have a recording. And, I mean, the whole idea is that you, there's a fee to participate in this. But I think that one session is so phenomenally good, that it'd be nice if we could get that and have people be able to watch from the board that didn't see it. It's that good.
So someone did ask that in the chat during the conference, and the answer was no, it will not be available.
Yeah, it was only available the next morning, because I didn't watch it that night for the closing. I watched it the next morning.
I watched it the next morning as well.
And that was it.
Yeah. Because people were asking for it to be available to board members, and, and the association said no, it'd only be available. So I don't know if that's part of the contract they had with her, or, or what the issue was there. But I can follow up at the next board meeting to see if it's a possibility.
Yeah, and I can certainly, uh, I reached out to Paula the next morning and just told her how phenomenal I thought that was. And, um, I, I gave her the suggestion, because one of the things that came up, which I thought was pretty good, was the policy, the school board policies that we get, uh, for a fee, we get from MSBA, the Monta policy program. And one of the things that this woman suggested was the, really the number one thing, and we, people were asking what are, what should we get involved in right now? What's the best thing that school boards could do to, to work in this? And she said, uh, one of her top suggestions was to get at them, get your policies in order to reflect these changes in, in equity, uh, work and student handbook, stuff like that. And so I, I called Paula and I suggested, is there a way that MSBA could go ahead and Joel, and look at the book of policies that we have and say, okay, here's the top ten that you really need to get at right away. These are the ones you need to review right away. So that we, you know, it'd make it a lot easier if we said, well, okay, we've got ten that we need to get through and refresh and look. And hopefully, MSBA would do that, refreshing too, and then it comes out to us, then we look at it. So they're actually working on that. Uh, and then the second piece I suggested out of this, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of going on, but, um, was that they look at the phased training work that we as a school board member should take and, uh, look at maybe equity inclusion work as one of the phased trainings. And Paula said, as a matter of fact, we're looking at that as well. So, I mean, that was, that was how strong that particular presentation was. Um, so, let's, let's see if we can get that out for everybody, because I just think it's really good, really do.
I did do the, um, this wasn't part of that seminar, but the CARES Act funding one.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody else did that one, but.
No.
Anyway, I thought it was, it kind of just outlined all the different pots of money, goes into a lot of detail, so I.
It's treasure, this is a great one for you, a ten.
And so, and I really wanted to get a better handle on it. I, I, it was a lot of information, and as we all know, education funding is complicated to begin with. But there were, they did touch on the different pots of money. Um, there's the coronavirus relief fund, the governor's emergency education relief, which is different, and then elementary and secondary school emergency relief, amongst many others. But those were the three I felt like I got a little bit better grasp on. I think that video is still available if people want to watch it. But I just, I, I thought it was a little bit helpful. I would obviously not know exactly which pots of money we're getting money from, but I think if Jeff were to explain it, then it gives you a good basis as to why those pots are available where. And so, anyway, I thought it was good.
Great.
Um, then also for MSBA, the leadership conference proposals are out. Um, so if we want to submit something, I don't think they've finalized the, um, format for leadership coun, uh, leadership count, leadership conference in January, but the proposal forms are out, so. That's it from MSBA. Kevin, you want to talk about nine sixteen?
Nine sixteen, yep, uh, well, uh, I mean, I imagine a school district that stretches across four counties, and you can start to grasp the complexity that nine sixteen is working through. Uh, also factoring in, uh, career and tech programming, which is very hard to do remotely. If you're going to study to be, uh, a diesel mechanic, uh, it's kind of hard to do that remotely, right? You need to, the thing. And, uh, and then also combine that with the, uh, special ed requirements there. And we go down to, uh, the level three, they go to four, which is very intensive. They've got to have a lot of staff. And, uh, these students need extra, they really need a lot of extra at all times. And, um, can pose significant risks in the home front without that level of care that is consistent. And, you know, the, the students get used to the routines a lot of times, that's quite helpful. So there is this, uh, challenge. The idea is what they're calling enhanced remote learning, which means essentially that they're going to try to, as we are too. I mean, we learned in March through June what worked, though, I think, Barb, as you said, the lows and the lows. And, uh, you know, same, same idea that they've really picked it up. They also ordered a whole fifty thousand dollars' worth of Chromebooks because of this. And I was talking to Patrick earlier about that, and, uh, the order, unlike Patrick and the team getting everything, uh, all the ducks in a row early, our order's been held up. And, uh, so we're working on trying to figure that out. It sounds like it's a fairly complex, uh, piece that has to work through, so we're hopeful there. Yeah, I guess that's, that's, that's what's going on in nine sixteen, so.
Great, thank you. Any other subcommittee reports? I don't think we've had any subcommittee meetings recently. Been a little busy.
I, I attended one other workshop.
Right, as we can go there next, so other items and reports, so Julie starts off.
Um, on, okay, what was that? Well, one day this week, I went to, uh, Tobacco Twenty-One Workshop through Washington County again. And they gave an update on the new Tobacco Twenty-One law, which was signed into effect on May sixteenth by the governor. And, uh, enforcement began August first, so. It has impacts, I just forwarded a list of resources that they shared at the meeting with Barb. Um, all kinds of different resources for families, My Life, My Quit, Quit Partners Minnesota, In Depth, which is a program that we may want to look into, which provides many alternatives to suspension for kids who are caught vaping in school. Um, the vape talk and the e-SIG toolkit from Department of Health to help families deal with the issues of addiction, so.
Great.
But the main thing is the law took effect August first, it was kind of an anticlimactic thing, there's too many other things going on, so. So, there you go.
And in addition, I think Kevin, Stacy, Julie and I attended the Equity Workshop that was put on for staff in the district, teachers and staff, um, from the.
Equity Literacy Institute.
I know literacy is in there.
About where that went, yeah. Um, I very much enjoyed that work. Um, I enjoyed, you know, the opportunity to talk to board members and others about work and perspectives. And I, I think our teachers enjoyed the opportunity, especially those breakout groups, to have conversations with each other in this area. I'm not sure if others want to share from that experience.
Love to. Um, yeah, maybe it's the fact that we haven't been together in person for so.
I know.
But I, but I'm just like running at the mouth, and I'm really sorry. But I thought that was amazing training, and I just, uh, Barb, thank you for getting that lined up and getting this, in the, in the face of COVID-19, to kind of pull this off, uh, I think was, was inspired. And I thought, uh, Seema, who was the facilitator, was amazing. I just, and she gave some, there's some nice little video interludes, and there was the breakout things, it was really good. And this is her, her book, which, uh, I got Laura to find me a copy, I'm taking home to read. I was that, I mean, taken by this presentation. So I think, uh, the district is really well-positioned to move strongly and lead forward on equity work. So, thank you for that, Barb.
So Seema, who wrote the book, um, that book is actually being used for the cultural competency training across the state too. So I know Courtney McCormick was using it before she left in our district, which really helps and supports our teachers with their licensure renewal. So that's been really good. And then last year, remember with our, um, Bite Size Book Club, we read a case from that, the candy bar case, and, and had a really good discussion based upon that, um, case in there. So it's a very nicely put-together book, um, in terms of the questions and things and thinking it does, so I, I appreciate that book.
I don't know if Laura, if I'm done with this, if I can pass that on to, uh?
I have a copy too already, I own a copy.
Everybody else, I could?
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't mind.
Any other updates? Okay, seeing none, superintendent's report happened earlier, so that's taken care of. Um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.